I'm here because KCCMH is passionate not only about its patients, but its employees.
I'm here because I love my community.
I'm here because I believe in rural healthcare.
Healthcare should be amazing regardless of where you live.
I am here because I love this hospital and I love this community.
I am here because I enjoy practicing rural medicine for my hometown.
It is my nature to help others.
It's good to be home. It's good to contribute somehow, some way to the community.
I am here because I want to be able to take care of patients where they live.
I am here because KCCMH has helped me grow and I love my patients.
I am here because my career has a future.
I'm here because I want to be part of making Kid Carson County stronger.
I am here.
I am here.
I am here.
I am here.
Nosotros estamos aquí.
We're here for you.
We need this hospital. We'll support it.
Good evening. Thank y'all for joining us tonight. It's been a while since we've been able to do this. I think we... Last time we did this was in September of 21. There was a lot of uncertainty and that breeds a lot of anxiety in the community. And I think we've come a long way since then. I look forward to sharing the story of where we've been in the last two, two and a half years. The progress that we've made as an organization and our continued commitment to the community. So hopefully you enjoy this and what we'll do after this. We'll open up some questions and try to answer as many of the questions as you have. Dr. Pimentel, get a screen back. Come on.
Yeah, I was telling Brian that the crowd tonight is perfect because when this place is packed, that means there's usually some drama going on. So it's kind of good to see that there's a lot less of that going on this time around. So anyway, just, I've been here now for 24 years. Next August will be 25 years with Dr. Perez and myself. And Bryant has this big old party planned for next year, so I can't wait for that. But anyway, a lot of changes. 1999, we came up and we more or less came up to kind of help Dr. Younger and Dr. Hoppy. And I guess I never saw myself being in the same spot that they were in, you know, 24 years ago. Now we're the two docs here and trying to get somebody else to kind of help us. But that seems to be the common thread, I think, for hiring doctors out in Burlington in general. It's been 24 good years and we're happy to be here. I would say for the last 24 years, there's always been a couple of questions that are asked of us. And the most common one has been, "Are you guys staying?" And I can tell you guys that as of right now, once again, 24 years done. And as of right now, we've signed a contract for five more years. So as far as that question goes, yeah, we're here to stay for a little bit longer anyways. And then, as you know, the hospital has changed. There are some things that we do that haven't changed. But some of the big changes are we're no longer delivering babies here. And so as far as that goes, we do have a planned place to where, you know, pregnant moms, if they choose to, there's still prenatal care available here. The ER staffing is also just quite a bit different. Back in the day, it was Dr. Younger, Dr. Hoppy, or ourselves doing kind of double duty and doing the clinic. And then if the ER came in, we'd go to the ER. And I can say that there's definitely some downsides to it, but there's also a lot of positives to it. It's kind of hard to relay just how tough it is to really do. And I think that by doing that, you get a good experience in the emergency room and the clinic. The experience, I think, is better also because you're not distracted having to do two different things. So those are probably the biggest differences that we've had just as far as practicing rural medicine. But I do get asked that, as we all know, the burning to rumor mill is pretty powerful. And I get asked all the time, "We've heard that you guys are no longer seeing people in the hospital." And that's definitely not true. We're still doing daily rounds in the hospital. And I don't know if Susan Dormin is here right now, but she's still also seeing patients in the hospital. So if you come into the hospital, you admit it, the inpatient side of things hasn't changed one bit. Still going to be us doing all the rounding. And somebody asked also whether or not we're still covering the nursing home. And 100%, we're still doing the nursing home rounds. Dr. Days from Dillon is also participating in that. But for the most part, most of the patients still is either Dr. Perez, myself, or Susan Dormin. So that part has not changed one bit. The staff, I think right now between myself, Dr. Perez, and Brenda Bregel, we may be the most senior employees at the hospital right now. You know, Jerry Busby retired a few months ago, but up until then, she was pretty much unbeatable. So anyways, we've kind of now taken that, but the staff has really gone through a lot of changes. I mean, I think we've probably have set the record. We've been through many CEOs, many different administrations. And I can say that after 24 years plus, we've been through a whole bunch, especially in the last five years. But right now, I do think that we're in a super good spot. You know, three years ago when we did this, there's a ton of turmoil. But we have a very, very stable staff at the clinic. We have some great providers. Our newest provider is Alex Hitchcock. And she's doing just quite well with everybody else. Those Beach Palace fans out there. But you know, Michelle Wright, Jessie, I mean, just really Kim Wright, just some... Kim Weston, actually, just some super good providers right now. And even though Health Essentials is not really part of our clinic or the hospital, I will say that they're also part of the team because, you know, we're all here to help the town out. And we do support Health Essentials, even though they're a little business plan, but they're helping us out. So it's a really super good staff. We're still looking to fill some positions. But I can tell you, if you can admit it to the hospital right now, the experience is really good. The ER providers that we have right now, the slide group, they are, they're super excellent. And they care about the community. We do have some traveling nurses, but the nurses we have right now, they're locals and are long-term employees. They're, they're super good. So if you talk to enough people that have been in the hospital recently, I think you're going to know that the vibes are very, very good. It's a good experience. And I think I'll finish by saying that, just, I don't know if there's any high school kids here or not, but just like when I was coming through the ranks of being a physician, you know, we're still having the same challenges trying to recruit staff. And if there's anybody out there that wants to be a nurse or a physician, I think that offer still stands. I mean, we're definitely going to bring kids back. And I'm in my 24th year of practice once again, but you kind of start seeing too where like, where's the replacements coming into the ranks? So I would put that out for that community. If we can get our kids to come back into nursing or docs, whatever, we're definitely still in that same game looking to kind of replace our ranks. Anyway, that's my story. I don't know if there's any other rumors out there, but I'd be happy to answer questions as best I can. And I'll hand this thing back over to Bryant Volker, our CEO. And as far as that goes, I will tell you guys, Jim Jordan was the first CEO that I worked for. Jim Jordan was great. Every time I see the staff from back in the day, like, some of the names they'll throw out, the wall, Regina, Vicki Cox. Just super, super good staff. For about 10 years, we took it for granted. I had no idea where it actually meant. But I mean, that was just a super good generation of healthcare workers. And then the next years after that has been just really super exciting. But I can tell you guys that right now, we have a good administration and a good board. I did just a super brief survey this morning and asked a couple of people anything to bring up. And Alex Hitchcock, one of our newbies, she goes, "Well, I might be in a bit of a bubble right now, but my drama meter is basically zero or one." And I reached out to Jenny Shaw, the physical therapist here in town, and asked her anything to bring up. And she's like, honestly, she says, "I haven't heard anything from you guys for a while," which is always a good thing. So I'm getting paid a little bit to say this, but the board right now and the CEO, it's a good setup right now. I think all of us can tell you guys, drama is never zero at KCCMH. But right now, it is at one of the definite low points as far as drama goes. And that's just, that's just a really good feeling to come to work and not have to worry about the excess stress and just kind of focus on your job. It really means a lot to us. So with that, I'll give that to Bryant here.
As Dr. Pimentel said, we do have a great board. Kyle Miltonberger is the board chair. Dave Gottman, vice chair. Cindy Hawley, secretary. Mark Hears, our treasurer. Kevin Hears is a director and Eileen Richards is a director. And I'll say, we do have a great board. It's leadership, it's governance. I know in, prior to me, there were, there were times when boards got it and tried to get into operations. I will tell you, it's a governing board. And we really do share the same vision. Senior leadership team, myself, Russ Miller is assistant administrator. Heather Brito is our chief financial officer. And Rebecca Cisneros is director of operations and human resources. Next couple of slides have department managers. I'm not going to go in great detail and single out all of them, but a great solid team as a look up here. These folks have been here for a long time. They're committed to this organization and the community. Got a couple of folks we don't have pictures of. Amber is our new director of nursing. And Beth Saxton is our new infection prevention director. Again, Dr. Pimentel went through our providers. Of course, Dr. Pimentel, Dr. Perez, Alex, Jessie, Michelle, Kim. Krista Davis is an LCSW. Do a fantastic job over at Park Health. We have a park wellness providers, Brian Gordon, Brittany Connor, and Sarah. Just fantastic volumes that continue to grow every year. Appreciate everything these guys do for us. As Dr. Pimentel said, we do have new providers in our emergency department. That's almost two years into this relationship with Meg, Brittany, Tom, Keith, and Brent. Just fantastic group. Really enjoyed working with them. And the next few slides have our specialty clinic providers. And I'm sure not going to go into all those. But these folks see a lot of patients. It was jammed up today with all the patients that we're seeing. Just to highlight some of the new ones, Dr. Nala Ferretti is oncologist. She's been back with us for a little over a year. Dr. Solomon has ophthalmologist who's been with us since early fall. Dr. Ninka has been a neurologist here with us for the last six months or so. Dr. Franklin was doing surgeries today. So a super group of folks there. Again, just absolutely solid. Our anesthesia providers, we've had new anesthesia providers now for almost two years. Do a great job. They're here when we have surgeries. And as Dr. Pimentel alluded to earlier, we no longer have a surgical service line. So we don't have 24/7 anesthesia any longer. But when we have cases like today, they're here for us. The EFAC, the Patient Family Advisory Council. I know there's some of the members in the audience tonight. These are a group of folks from the community who help us see what they see. Help us see our facility from a patient's point of view. I'll be honest, there are times I'm walking through that facility and I don't, I don't see things because I see it every day. You just get accustomed to seeing it and it doesn't stand out to you. Or there are things that are happening in the hospital that I may not see. These members tell me about it. We meet pretty much every month. They take the summers off, but just a great group of folks giving us that input, letting us know what they see in the community. If you have any interest in joining this group, please let us know. We would love to have more members in that, in that group. Our employees, obviously the backbone of what we do. Our annual payroll is about $6 million. We have 105 employees with that distribution. So seven providers, 32 nurses, CNA, paramedics, EMPs, 23 ancillary patient care techs, that's radiology, lab, physical therapy, those kind of folks. Support staff of 18 and admin like me, 25. So 105 employees working for the community and making sure we deliver great patient care. One of the things we've really been focused on in the last two years is employee engagement. There have been a lot of efforts. There's, there's a committee within the hospital who focuses on employee engagement. How do we make all of the staff get the most out of their, their job, get the most out of work? We spend a lot of time at work. We spend more time at work than we do at home with our families. So it needs to be, it needs to be enjoyable and it needs to be fulfilling. It needs to be rewarding. And I know, just speaking for myself, that's why I do what I do, because it is rewarding. In our most recent employee engagement, you can see our percentage of favorite, where's the number of employees that ranked those fine areas as favorable. 75% of our employees are enthusiastic about their jobs. 74% intend to stay for the next two years and so forth. Those are really solid numbers. We are improving. We continue to improve. Overall, we have a 69% employee engagement. I actually heard this afternoon on a call that the industry standard right now is 72%. So if we're 69 and the standard is 72, we're pretty close, y'all. And we're getting it there. We'd like to let them have a little fun as well. See, they dress up for hospital week, for Halloween. We cook breakfast for them during hospital week. Actually had a cornhole tournament this year. I have never seen a group of employees so engaged. Am I right, Park Health? Lot of fun. These are a list of services that we do provide. I'm not going to go into these in great detail. A lot of services. And we'll see some volumes in a minute that you can see what the folks in this community come to us for. One of the things that we've done in the last year, year and a half is we engage professional marketing firm for us. And a lot of these, what we do, highlights some of these service lines. And you've seen it, whether it's in the paper, you've seen it on social media, you've seen it on the, on the website. Just a real professional approach to educating the community about what we do. So we can see, there's Krista and her EMDR, just fantastic trauma therapy, cardiology, concussion management, dermatology, E and T. That's been a super active service line for us. Dr. Reichman stays busy. I wish we could get more Dr. Reichman. Unfortunately, he's booked out quite a bit in advance. Laboratory, direct access lab testing. Then we've implemented, implemented in the last six months or so. It's a great opportunity for someone to come in, pay cash price. I did this for myself just a few weeks ago. It's super easy. You come in, you pay for your service, you go back, you get your lab draw, and you get the results. On the flip side, your provider does not get the results. And it's up to the patient to educate their provider, provide them that information of what's going on with their labs. Ophthalmology, we started cataract surgeries. Back early fall, Dr. Solomon has been super busy. Looking to add him for an additional day per month in the very near future. Visiting nurse, that was an item of conversation when we had this meeting back in September 21. It's what are we doing for home health and hospice? We have converted from a freestanding hospice and home health agency set up to now we provide the same service out of the clinic. Committee provides a great opportunity for more continuity of care. Your providers are seeing those, those patients in the record, the MR, they're in the clinic. So same service, but greater continuity of care. The new service lines we've added recently. Again, Dr. Nala Ferretti, oncology, evatology, diagnostic memos. We added those back in the, in the last all 12 months or so. Ophthalmology, neurology, direct access labs, which I've talked about, and dietitian. We now have a local dietitian, Natalie Miltonberger, is coordinating with us and reviewing the dietary needs of our, of our patients. And so it's great to have her on the board now. I talked a little bit about gen marketing and the professional approach that we have to marketing now. And they developed a new website for us. So it's, it does look a whole lot different than the prior website, but it's a lot more dynamic. And if you don't get anything else out of tonight, what I want you to get out of it is is how committed we are to this community and what we're here for. And that's to take care of y'all and the rest of the folks in this community. We did a teddy bear clinic here in the last several weeks. We're very active in the rodeo, in the county fair, bike rodeo, a number of things that we do in the community. And I'm sure you're getting kind of tired of seeing all of our ads in the various papers where it's, whether it's here in Burlington, Stratton, Flagler. We definitely try to have a presence in those communities. And then our patients tell us about how they feel, about the care that they receive for us. Janet Kraus couldn't say enough nice things about the outcomes that she received in physical therapy. And Terry Cox, it's, it's great to hear the positive news that our patients have to tell us.
And this is where we start talking about numbers. I know some of your nine number structure has a certain length over a little bit. What I want to focus on is the 2022 column and the 2023 column. And you can see how that goes compared to prior years. We're having a fantastic year for volumes in 2023. 256 hospital admissions. We'll be over 3,000 ER visits. Outpatient surgeries are up looking, 131 outpatient surgeries go back to 2020. We only did 42. Huge increase in just a few years. Imaging studies, the clinic business and specialty clinics. Going from just a little over 2,000 visits in 2020 to now it's 4,000. Double that volume in just a few years. So we appreciate everything that this community does for us. We appreciate the fact that the community stays here for us. And we like to think that we provide a pretty good service. The pie chart on the right just gives you a kind of a distribution of what those volumes and how they're spread out between the clinic, imaging, ER, and specialty clinics. You can see that almost 50% of our registrations are for patients that go through the clinic. So it's absolutely parity. And I kind of appreciate what our primary care providers do for us and what they do for this community. You know, when I think back to the presentation that I made in September 21, we just cut the surgical service line. We have just terminated our wound care program. The slide that I showed back then, back in 2021, and it was going to be $640,000 that year compared to where we are. Protectively for this year, that's making over $2.5 million. Just a great effort by everybody involved. Obviously, we've got a significant increase in volumes. That helps a lot. But as Dr. Pimentel said earlier, the employees of this organization are so committed to delivering fantastic patient care and driving along with this fantastic financial results. The improvements that we've made since 2021 have really solidified your organization. We're going to be here for all kinds. Dr. Pimentel says he's at least here another five years. We're going to get more than five out of it. You know, when I think back to my interview with the providers way back in, I guess that was March of 21, and had lunch with them, and I asked the group, I said, "What's the first thing that I need to fix in this organization if I get a chance to join them?" And Dr. Pimentel said, "Fixability." And it's, I know you folks probably have horror stories of building, everybody does. I have horror stories of healthcare building that have occurred to me. But we're well on our way to helping fixing building. What I want you to look at on the graph on the left-hand side, those are cash collections. And January of '23, we moved Ramona into the revenue cycle director position. And you can see what happened to our cash collections since, since January of '23. Now, some of that's volume related, but it's also processes and getting bills out the door and getting those collected timely. And what it's done is our days cash on hand has gone on to almost 300 days cash on hand at the end of October. What that means is if we did not collect another dime for 300 days, we could operate that hospital. That's strong. I think we're one of the strongest, if not the strongest, critical access hospital in the state with 300 days cash on hand. And there we're going to there. We have started, and there's a little of there. We have started sending out, well, she corrected me today. Send out Monday, letters to each and every patient who receives services in the hospital. Summarizing your insurance, asking that if it's not correct, the police get us correct information. And giving you an understanding of what it takes to collect those dollars. You know, if we drop a Medicare bill or Medicaid bill, we're going to collect those funds in about 14 days. If it's insurance, it's going to take us three, six months. And we'll, we'll be communicating with your insurance company that whole time. So I know a lot of folks, they said, "Well, I didn't get a bill for six months." The reason's because we've been talking to your insurance company. And then whenever they finally get their, their process done, that's when you hear from us. So be looking for those letters to come out whenever you have an encounter with us. And just give me an update of what's going on with your insurance.
One of the things we worked on back in August, we had a board retreat. And then we had writers and department managers join us. And we created a strategic plan. The first pillar of that plan was to strengthen and invest in core services. The second pillar was promote a patient-centered culture of quality and customer service. Third one was rebalance the cost structure. With the fourth one being improve employee satisfaction and engagement. The fifth pillar that we identified was we need to define and focus on a brand repair and re-infiguration journey. So we have five different teams that are working on those five different pillars. Developing tactics to help them achieve those strategies, to help us achieve those strategies. It's going quite well. Matter of fact, this meeting came out of the strategic builder team number five, which is the defined and focused brand repair and re-infiguration journey. Just to get back in front of the community, to make sure the community knows what we're doing. To make sure the community knows we're going to be here for a long time and how solid our financial position is. position is. So to conclude, I do want to thank each and every one of you for being here tonight. I see a lot of you, whether it's in a P F A C meeting, whether it's a patient in the hospital, I see you in the halls. I appreciate, I truly appreciate you choosing us, because I know it is a choice, and so thank you very much for being here tonight. If you have any questions at all, please ask me. I will ask that you don't ask any personal questions or any patients about a, or any questions about a specific patient, but other than that, I can answer anything you have.
Brian, I was just going to ask you, Annette Eisenberg, do you guys do all of your billing in-house, or do you use a third party?
Great question, Annette. We use a third party. They're affiliated with the company that owns or provides us with our electronic medical record. So that, once we admit the patient and we enter charges for that patient's stay into the patient record, at that point, it's taken over by our billing company, and they drop those bills, and then they collect the money. What else?
I have a question. I'd like to know, of the flight crews that come into our hospital here, is that your choice, or would you take our, if we had insurance for a flight crew?
Oh, the flights?
Yes.
That is an ongoing challenge for us to get patients to that higher level of care. A lot of times, our ground resources are limited, whether they're limited on a 911 call for here, or another transfer. A lot of times, our only option is to put that patient on either a helicopter or fixed wing. It's not our preference, but at that point, we're looking for any resource we can to get that patient to a higher level of care.
So if I had insurance with a different company than what you would possibly call, like St. Anthony's or whatever, then you would call insurance that I have to the flight?
Yes, yeah, we definitely need to, and interestingly enough, this was a topic of conversation at our board meeting last month. We need to make sure, we need to ensure that if you come in with insurance for helicopter transportation, and we take that into account whenever we line up the transportation, because I know how dreadfully expensive that can be.
Right. I just wondered if there was any way that the hospital would, how would the hospital know that?
Yeah, that's a hard one.
At that time, if we're not already registered with you or something like that?
Yeah, that is a hard one to do. If you come in and you can't provide us that information, and we're looking to get you to that higher level of care, then a lot of times, we're going to seek the path of least resistance and get you there. But we definitely need to take into account the insurance that you may have for that The board and I chatted about that just a few weeks ago, and I think we need to do a better job of that, because we definitely don't want you to have insurance coverage with one air carrier, and then we put you on another one to get you to Denver.
So when someone needs to be sent for better care, do you have a choice at the hospital that you go to?
The patient always has a choice. A lot of times...
They recommend some hospitals that are better than others on critical care or whatever?
Well, and you know, we've got Dr. Prevedel, Dr. Rubus. Dr. Prevedel was in our specialty clinic today. If we have a cardiology patient that comes in, someone with an acute MI that is definitely needing to get to Denver, we'll send them to Aurora, just because it will facilitate that follow-up care with either Dr. Prevedel or Dr. Rubus in the specialty clinic. I'm sorry?
What care they need?
Yes, yeah.
The best care?
That's a lot easier than the last one. All right.
Everybody asks why we can't deliver babies here, and I think the reason was that we don't deliver enough babies, we weren't having the whole unit with nurses and everything to make work. Is that true?
That is still the case. You know, we were delivering about 50 babies a year. You know, when we terminated that service in September of '21, that was right on the beginnings of what is still a very acute nursing shortage. We're paying, at one time, we're paying travel nurses, at least the agency, not necessarily the individual. We were up to $150, $160 an hour for a nurse. It's down quite a bit now, but it's still very expensive. And if we had been going through, you know, all of 2022, paying $150 an hour for a nurse who can work in the E R, who can work on the floor, and can deliver a baby, I can tell you that those financial results that I shared with you just a few minutes ago would be drastically different. We lost over $600,000 in 2021. I can guarantee you that number would have been a lot higher loss in 2022. It just didn't make sense from a financial perspective and a quality perspective. I'm not a nurse, I'm not a clinician, and sometimes I get in trouble by even trying to think like they do, but just the skill sets and keeping sharp on all the things that you have to do. And it's a risky service line for sure. Dr. Pimentel can add a lot more data and a lot more structure to that answer, but that was the reason that we got out of that book of business. I like to think that part of our financial success in the last 18 months or so has been because we refocused what we were doing, broadened other specialties to provide care to a lot more lives in the community, and we're a lot stronger today. Having 300 days almost of cash on hand is strong, and there's a lot of things I worry about in my job. I was having a conversation just the other day, and it's one of those things, you wake up at four o'clock every morning, and your mind is just racing about the stuff you've got to work on or that you're worried about. Fortunately, I don't worry at all about our cash position. I know we're strong, I know we will continue to be strong, and those hard decisions are what led to us being able to have that position.
Will you expand on the home health nursing versus the visiting nurse?
Yes, yes. Home health as a distinct entity has, there's a lot of regulations that you have to comply with that are mostly around billing and governmental reporting. When we closed our home health agency and our hospice agency and moved those services into the clinic, there was no change in the service. We still have Bree going out and seeing patients in their homes, providing that hospice care, that end-of-life care. So from a patient care perspective, of what the patient sees, there's been no change. For us, it's merely we eliminated the overhead, we eliminated the governmental regulations that are burdensome to a home health agency. And we could do that because we were the only home health agency in the county. That gave us a lot more flexibility in being able to move that service into the clinic. Awesome. Well, thank y'all again so much for being here tonight. I truly appreciate it, and I know there are a lot of demands on folks this time of year, and Christmas is just around the corner. We'll have this, next time we have this, we'll do it at a little less active time of the year. But again, thank you so much for coming out tonight. W C, go on.